Meeting tonight to speak to you about Rita and our services. Let me know if you cannot hear me. Again, in the interest of time, we are going to skip through some of the slides itself. They pertain to Rita and its information, and we can always send that to you at a different time at your request. So Rita joined, I'm sorry, we have 320 members, as you can see here, and we are constantly building on those. We do offer a full-service tax collection from taxpayer registration. We have our municipal licensing. We work with rental property owners to get information from max W2s, and that's with our taxpayer registration. We do offer a full-service tax return processing, audit, and customer service along with call We have our business compliance department, and again, we offer full service with those also for return processing, audit, and customer service. We do send monthly and quarterly billing statements through the business compliance to the withholding and net profit filings. Our payment and filing collections, we do collections of delinquent non-taxpayers. We have legal auditors. We do have a non-filer, and we offer an administrative subpoena program. We do small claims, civil action bankruptcies. We do work with the federal government, which is our FTI program with the IRS, so we are able to work with them to get taxpayer information. Our records management, we do data entry. Everything that comes through is Emmy, and we do have a record retention policy. For our information technology, we offer information security. We have help desk support, and our development in our program is offered within there also. Our support services, we have administration, finance, member relations, which would be our member services, and then of course, we have our building security along with the reception. And then this just gives you a glance at our computer hardware and software systems. We offer e-filing, e-payments, and e-registration. And again, we have our document imaging, which is electronic retention and retrieval of tax records. We have an interactive voice response telephone, which is the IVR, and this is 24/7, and this is self-service, so the taxpayer can call Rita any time of the day and get an update on their account. We do have for our facilities, tax and administrative offices, we have our IT program, we do record storage, we do have off-site secured storage of data and backup systems. Our disaster recovery for systems and staff, which we are going through part of now with this COVID-19, and it is very successful. Over approximately 95% of our employees are actually working from home, so we are able to continue processing and taking payments and our customer service portion of talking to our taxpayers. Our outside services, we do printing of tax forms and refund checks. We do postage and billing, and then we do have receipt of our tax forms and payments, which goes to a secured bank lockbox. So everything is secure. Let's see. Our optional, and all of this is included in the cost that will be provided to you. Our optional services is our court hearing attendance and civil actions in small claims, and there is a small charge for that. Our outside attorneys, which would be the post-judgment collections, and this is a rate that is given to Rita only. Normally, these collection attorneys can charge up to 32%, and our rate is actually 18%. We offer administrative subpoenas. Those are $8 for each one that goes out. And again, these three are the only additional charges, and they're optional. So you do not have to participate in none of these, but they are there for you if you would like those. Currently, Rita with our legal department, we chair court with Hamilton, I'm sorry, in Hamilton County, and we have Newtown, Milford, Mount healthy, Lachlan. So if you decided to use the portion of it, that is something that is a shared service. So if we schedule a party, we always make sure that we have numerous ones, so it's not just one at a time, and then you would share that cost with whichever municipality is on for that day also. Our software partners are able to link into our system, so when you file with Drake Software, H&R Block, they're actually able to file the municipal return along with the federal and state, so that information pulls in and taxpayers, so they're using those preparers, they're able to file through them also. For those that do their own filing, we have File, which they can go on to ritaohio.com. For Fast File, that's if all they're doing is filing and they're not making payments, and they have a W2, and it's fast and simple, they do not need to create an account with that one. We also offer on our website a fill-in PDF form, and then we also accept manual forms also. And this is what our website looks like. So we have our individuals, our businesses, and our tax professional area. So the individuals, of course, they would go to their individual, and they can look up information. Up in the corner, you see the Fast File. That's how they fast file their returns, and then my account is where they can create an account, and in that account, they can go in, they can see all of their information, they can see payments that they've made, and they file the return through there also. This is our Rita municipalities. So Norwood decides to join Rita, Norwood would come here also, and when you click on this, we'll look at Miller City, if you click on there, it will actually take you, I'm sorry, we'll do Brexville, my apologies. You click on the Brexville link, and that takes you to the actual website. So it would say Norwood up here, Hamilton County, and then it would have the Norwood website. Taxpayer clicks on there, it takes him straight to the Norwood website itself. And these here are our members that we've had, new members in 2019, and new members in 2020. The most recent that is not on here, and they are going to be September 1 start, is Xenia. Xenia decided to come over to Rita for us to take care of their tax collections, and we're also going to have an in-house tax department within Xenia. So Rita is going to have a footprint down in the southwest area also, and that's actually closer to Norwood than our current office, which is in Worthington. And then again, this is just municipalities that are close in with the city of Norwood. And then we have again our customer service, we have our membership customer service, which is our member services department. That consists of, we have, let me count real quick, we have six government liaisons and two support, and then our manager. We are the direct point of contact for like 10 in your tax administrator. You would actually come through us if you have any questions, if you need help accessing any information. We offer representation to meetings such as the OML, the SLOTA, the GOTA, and at the State House also. On our taxpayer side, we have our taxpayer customer service, and these, and our customer service, they actually deal with the actual taxpayer. We do have five different walk-in locations around the state. They offer the enhanced website with e-filing capabilities, our modernized e-file partnerships, and our call service. And we do offer onsite taxpayer assistance days, which is regionally in your community. And I do believe that the first year that you are with us, when the tax filing season comes around, we will come down on a specific day to your location and offer the assistance there for your taxpayers. So we do have 200 agents across Ohio located in Brexville, Worthington, Youngstown, Cleveland Heights, and Mentor, and then again, starting in September, we'll also have agents located in Xenia. We do service taxpayers in person, on the phone, fax, and through the website. There's numerous ways that they can contact Rita, through our, again, our interactive voice response. They can call in through there during our working hours, and they'll act a voice person. So there's numerous ways that they can access their accounts, either through our customer service or through online. And then we offer year-round taxpayer compliance programs, and that is, again, these are optional, the non-filer program, the administrative subpoena program. We also have accelerated collections, which is included automatically. Our legal program, which is again optional. We have our contractor registration and project tracking, which is what our person in our business compliance takes care of, and that's included. And again, we have our FTI, which is federal tax information, that's included also. These are just some statistics of some of the calls taken. If you can see in 2015, 194,000, 2016, 199. Year-to-date, this was for 2019, 230 calls were taken. And the average wait time during the last three days of the filing season was four minutes and, four minutes and 50 seconds to talk to an agent, which we've continuously decreased. Now, let's see, over the three days during the filing season, we took over 9,000 calls just in those three days, and 4,400 calls were taken on the actual April 15th of 2019 filing time. Our collections department in 2019, and this was through payment plans or settlements, we recovered $29 million for our municipalities, and this work is performed year-round for all of our members, and this is at no additional cost. Our non-filing and administrative subpoena programs, in the 2019 and 2020, we issued 245,000 non-filing notices and 106,000 administrative subpoenas. With those, we identified $26 million in liabilities, and this was again, to date, which would have been back in March, we collected 7.4 million with remainder of the liabilities in various stages of billing collections and illegal. And the total cost for our members to participate, and this was $8 per subpoena, of the 7.3 million dollars that we've collected today, 851,000 is the total cost for all of our participating members. So that's a shared cost. In our legal program, in 19, we filed over 11,000 cases and used 760 of those as our FTI. And before the accounts go, they are audited before it's filed, and then they're filed using our Rita attorneys and our staff. We collected $9.5 million, and 3 million of that does include suits from FTI. And the cost to our members was 943,000. For our FTI department, again, that's our federal taxable information, and this is something that is also performed year-round for all of our members, this is no additional cost. There were 46,000 accounts that were targeted, and we sent out 85,000 pieces of correspondence. We identified $20 million and collected 22. And when it's, with the 22, it's, these are from previous years also. And that's why the number of collections is higher than what we've identified, because we're still collecting on this.
Angela, can you take a question?
Sure.
This is Eric Dar. We were speaking right before the meeting started. I think because we only got like eight minutes, and I want to try to get as much as we can, I guess on TV. Our, I can understand the value proposition you've explained it in terms of what your group could bring to us. We also know we already have a tax department, and so I think what we're really asking is what incremental value are you going to bring? And with that, how can we quantify that you did these $10, and we processed these, this $20? And that, and the third question is, if you can identify your amount versus our amount, what is that rate your cost applied to? Is it the incremental dollars? I guess I'm trying to simplify it down to something I can understand. So how would you track the value, the additional dollars that you would be bringing into the city, knowing we already have the Treasury Department that processes taxes? And how does your rate or our cost help factor into the amount, the amount of tax revenue? Is it your incremental portion or the total portion?
Okay. Mark, can you answer that question? I'm sorry, I can, I can, I keep cutting out with the voice.
Yes, absolutely, I can answer that question. So our, our, actually, we retain on 3% of total collections, so anything that we're collecting, so the dollars that are coming in through what I would call voluntary submissions from your individual taxpayers and businesses, as well as any additional dollars that are coming in through the various compliance programs that Angela would describe, whether that's through collections, FTI, non-filer programs, through legal, et cetera. Annually, we reconcile our annual, our cost of collections, and that is what the charges would be placed upon. So if you're asking, can we identify the additional dollars that we bring in through those various compliance programs? Yes, we would be able to quantify those dollars, but the cost would be associated to every and all dollars collected on behalf of the municipality.
And is there a recent year or, within a recent year, is there a city kind of like ours that, either whether it be dollar figure or population, that you could demonstrate in 2018, actually 2018, they were running at a $23 million clip, and we brought an additional block? Is that sort of math table you can provide us for an example like that?
Yes, we can do that. We can provide the same communities that we've used for your cost comparison, and we refer to those as comparable communities. When I say comparable, that's based on population, tax rate structure, and we can look at the additional dollars that we brought in for those communities, and all the various compliance programs that we used to bring in those dollars, so we would be more than happy to provide those numbers to you.
Yeah, I think if that's it, this group really just wants to make it a math problem, because we already have a tax department, and we've got no intention of giving that up, because we think it's a pretty valuable resource for our citizens. So really, it's just trying to understand what incremental value is written in the cost associated. It'll just be one versus the other, that's it.
Okay, yeah, and that is something we can provide, provide to Ken, we'll work with Dr. Neil, we'll give that information to you. Okay, and we, we were able to, based on information provided that we received from the city of Norwood, we were able to estimate a projection for the cost of collections for Norwood. On the screen, um, for PC, it would be between the 290,000 and 320,000, which is at a percentage of 1.48% to 200, oh, I'm sorry, 163% of collections. I'm working on those screens, sorry about that. So that's what we are projecting, the cost in the city of Norwood, and again, put together comparable for you, so that you can see what we've brought in additionally to other municipalities using our FTI programs, our accelerated collections programs, our subpoena programs, our state ads, and the other resources we have. Okay, and this here just, I guess it kind of answers on why switch to Rita, or why join Rita. We do offer increased, we have increased service levels, we have our electronic filing and payments, our modernized e-file, easy for taxpayers to join us. And municipalities that join Rita, they do typically experience an increase in income tax collections as a result of our compliance programs, and again, that's information we can provide to you. So the next steps, of course, would be for you guys to, you know, discuss it with your council, identify your providers, like yes, we can provide you the information.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it's all in shape, so that's, you could email the presentation.
Okay, I'll make sure I get that to mail to you, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Are there any other questions from anyone?
I think that's, my only question was location. She had talked something about having a location in this, in this, this area, this region, is that?
All right, well, thank you.
Angela, real quick, one quick question. The location you had in this area, were you referring to the Xenia location?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, that's what I needed, okay. Thank you very much. One more question, one more.
Sure.
Well, actually, mine's more common, we're gonna have like a discussion period on this after.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you guys very much.
All right, thank you, you guys said goodnight.
You too.
All right, bye-bye.
Hey, I sent you an email with the cost estimate of the 1.48% to 1.63%. Also, I gave you a copy of the Rita estimate worksheet, so if you have any questions on that, and then, so also, do you have any comments there?
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I just wanted to note, just kind of like the, the total cost of this thing now between the Treasury Office and the earnings tax office. And I know that we still have to have some people, whether it be the IRS Treasurer, the Tax Commissioner, but if you subtract out the refunds, it looks like last year, we spent somewhere around $300,000 combined for having that department there. Again, they do other things besides just earnings tax collection, so just wanted to make that really clear. I also noted, I did reach out to the mayor about how it's working as well, and he did note actually that they have, I asked him how it's working out there, saying, he said that they collected more money every year that they've had, and they've been great on collecting, just for what that's worth, you know, there. And I know that, yeah, so I, I know they won't have a location near, I didn't, it sounds like it's from another world, but I guess it's closer than wherever else they're, they're at. And I say it's in another world, because I know it could be a big one, but it's like that far. But anyways, long story short though, it would be nice if they had a location closer, but, yeah, it'll just be interesting to see kind of what's in front of them, and what they're gathering, and what's in there.
Why's everybody gonna laugh at me here? Do they collect 3% of, or do they take 3% of what they bring into the city, or is it I heard the 3%, so I thought that that was what they were taking when, out of all the money that they collect.
I think that in general, once we've completed their estimate worksheet, they've given us the quote of 1.40%, 1.63%, like certainly.
It also, Matt? Because I, only because I think I'm gonna try to answer it. I don't know anything more than they did say, the 1.4, 6, whatever the heck. A few concerns would be, is that like some sort of introductory rate? Because it seemed like there was quite a lot of things that were happening on the first year, like all this citizen involvement. I hope that doesn't sound like a negative spin, I actually am super interested in this. I just don't, I don't know. I think there, we can go off the 1.6, but we should keep in mind that it could be more. Another interesting note was, it's rate X, whether that's 1.6 or 3, times total revenue, not incremental. So although they calculate their, they can calculate their incremental, like contributions, they're charging us on the same stuff that we're collecting on. So I think it's cool, and that's the lens I'm looking at it in, but I am a little bit suspect that, one, we already have a department, and it costs, you're saying $300,000 is probably a great, great earmark to put it against. I mean, that could be 600,000, that could be, and we don't know how much incremental value they're going to bring.
I think the biggest reason that I asked that question was, I know Gulf Manor went to it three years ago, and they actually, their, their collections rose, so they were bringing in more money from the first year that they went to it, and they were saving money because they got rid of that tax commissioner position, and just, they, they rebranded her position, I guess, into a different position, so that they could keep her on. But that's why I asked that question, because I knew Gulf Manor was, I think, was at like 1.4 or 5 or something percent. And I had actually texted Chris during that little conversation, thinking I thought it was at 1.5. And when she said 3%, that kind of worried me, up around that $600,000 mark.
Yeah.
Your question, I, I had a previous, I know it's, some cities, some population, and we can see what type of.
Obviously, they're going to pick the best year and the best city, no doubt, and that's fine, they should, but we just gotta keep that in mind.
We can ask more.
Thank you, thank you, Dan, so just to back up a little bit, for people that like to watch, can we talk about why we're looking into this agency, and since we already have our tax department, and now we're looking at a third party, can we just talk about why, and somebody go into why we're looking into this?
Well, there's a lot of the financial recovery plan commission being, I was tasked to investigate.
From a customer service and support level, and that's one of the first things that I got hit with, is our city is so far behind, we're antiquated when it comes to the services we provide. So one of the things that they provide is e-services, so you can actually file your taxes online. They provide the ability to, to complete your tax. So when you're doing, right now, when you do your federal tax, and you do your state tax, you can do all that stuff online, you can do that, but you can't do the city stuff, and you have to try to find the form, and print out the form, and then you have to, and it's, it's an antiquated system. And although we have software there, it's, for me, it was, it was not just a numbers-driven question, and it's not, it's still not for me. There are numbers involved, and I absolutely want to make sure that it is a good deal for us, but it is customer service, it's, it's the ability, it's the data sharing ability that they have, it's their way, their ability to track down, so the economies of scale and what they're doing to do at all. So I guarantee you, in a year or two, we're gonna get hit with, we need software upgrade, we need new computers, we need, that's some of the stuff that we constantly get hit with, because we've always tried to do this isolationist little, keep it all in-house, and that's, that's not really, sometimes it's not the best way. It might be that we go through this exercise, and we find out, eh, that's not for us, but I look at it for a couple of different reasons. I also get a lot of complaints, and I hear from taxpayers in the community all the time. Well, how do we know that the people in Norwood are actually paying the right taxes? 745209. Well, are they paying their taxes to us, or are they paying their taxes to Cincinnati? There's a story of a person who worked over in Norwood, and then paid taxes for three years, and when they went to the company, they said, well, why aren't you paying taxes? Why is this person not paying taxes? And they said, we're in Cincinnati, we don't pay. But nobody, how's that being tracked down? And that's one of the resources that Rita has also, they're actually actively investigating and trying to make sure that the taxes should be, the earnings taxes that should be paid in the city of Norwood are. I don't think that we have that capacity at this time. So there's, there are a couple of different things. Rather than just numbers, rather than just saying, okay, we're paying $300,000 now for what we get, everybody has to walk up to the door and turn their taxes in, and maybe look them over, and maybe your tax, you did your taxes right, maybe you didn't. It's, it's a much different, it's a different level of customer service, it's a different level of offerings that we're providing to the community, it's a different level of working to find the taxpayers that should be paying. That's, that's really the things that I think was part of the financial recovery plan, and part of our. part of our discussion was that. The other part is, if we're bringing in 19, you know, 19,628, shouldn't we be bringing in 20,628? And if so, then we're, are we missing out on stuff? So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that Rita can do that we don't have the capabilities to do in-house. So, thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Drayson.
And I know he said something about how individuals are paying their taxes. Something I did notice this year, for the first time, on at least one of the big three tax returns, if you do it yourself. TurboTax, they actually have a section for Rita and local municipality that'll file with Rita, with, while you file your federal, your Ohio, it'll send it straight to Rita as well. Which makes it a whole lot easier for individuals.
Good. We've heard that, because I just felt like that was a good question for that people that might be wondering. So appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Kelso?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor did a good job of answering one of my questions, like is, how is this going to be better than what we already are offering? And I think that is, they could do a lot more than we currently can. Visiting the tax department today, I was able to talk to them, and they think, you know, they're operating on a slim crew in there. And with a little bit more money to hire more people, they said they could probably compete with this and do a little, a couple more things. Whether the online thing would be there or not, I don't know. But you answered that very well, and I appreciate it. That was very informing to me. What I would like to see, what I hope to see, was kind of a breakdown of, well, this is how much money we kind of estimate you're losing out on, in a compared size to a city of our size, and income level to our size, to kind of get a, kind of a, we think there's another million or two out there that you're just not getting, before we just talk about spending a little bit more money. Because I think, you know, I was confused too, hearing the 1.4 or 5%, hearing the 3%, and those are two different figures, you know. That's, one's way more than what we're currently paying. And just making sure that we're getting more return in, versus that extra cost that we're paying out, I think is gonna be very important to look at. And so thank you for answering those questions, Mayor. That was very, very informative. Another question I have is, how do, if we make this change, how do we notify everybody? All the residents now that we are making this change? Is that something we put mailers out? They just come up there, and we gotta sign or something? Because I think that's gonna be a big hurdle of getting that information spread. And then another question I do is, I have is, if we do make this change, we still have that tax department there. What do we, what does that mean for our tax department and that budget? Is that just put towards Rita, or are they fired? Are we getting rid of them? Are we gonna repurpose them within the city and say, hey, we got this other job you might be able to do? And looking at that overhead cost of their salaries, if we're keeping them on in some fashion, to where we still have that overhead to look at on top of this Rita cost. So I just want to be cautious of those things going forward with this, and kind of look at that, and try to get some answers there as well. If we are going to let them go, we're going to save some of that money, but if we're gonna keep them on and put them in a different role somewhere, we're still gonna have that overhead going forward, is part of, you know, what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso. Mr. Bonson?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I guess specifically to that last comment about keeping them, putting them somewhere else. I mean, I would essentially expect that they would fill positions that are either vacant or will become vacant at some point. I mean, I don't think that they're, we're gonna increase the cost of the city and other areas just to ensure that, you know, we keep somebody on. I think we'll work on just finding places temporarily. But people leave the city for various reasons at different times, so I'm sure that that would all be worked out. The part to me, so I mean, you know, I want to make, I mean, the cost is important, but I mean, there is, like I said, as the mayor pointed out, but there is some benefit to our citizens when it comes to the customer service, especially having the call center that's there, having the IVR that you can get on the phone, get information even overnight. And then also, you have the online portal where you can check this different refund statuses and stuff. So there is some value there, and I think we should consider that. You know, the other thing is, you know, there's also flexibility to, I mean, if you did, were to go to something like Rita, which, you know, if we did, it does provide some kind of flexibility just with city governance in general. So let's say we did move towards a city charter at some point, having, you know, many cities don't even have an elected treasurer position. Now, this could be, this would be something years, years, and years away. But the good thing is that that would probably provide some flexibility to, you know, structure the city in a way where you don't have to have maybe some, some positions in order to, some of these positions, we just report to a city manager or something like that. So, you know, it just does provide some flexibility there too. But I do think that we should at least just look in the numbers, and just see where it's at. I honestly don't know how much we're not collecting. And I know that we don't have the information, some, I guess, I think we get state tax information, but we don't get federal, and I don't know if there's any extra benefit to have that federal tax filing information. But it sounds like there's some stuff they have, so I think we should look into it. But, you know, I don't know, like I said, I'm not sure where I'm at at this point.
Mr. Drayson?
Now, I do know that there's, if there are people watching, they'll probably ask this question in a comment on that video of, well, what if somebody doesn't have a computer? What if somebody doesn't have the internet? One thing that if we decide to go in this direction, we could do is provide somewhere in City Hall, an area of maybe one to three computers that are open to the public, that only open up to Rita. That's something that, you know, Gulf Manor did. When they went to Rita, they created a little alcove in the, in municipal building, and they've got one computer dedicated just to Rita. You can't go to any other website, the only one it comes up to is Rita itself. So that's one alternative that we could utilize if somebody doesn't have a computer, doesn't have internet access, if we do consider going this direction.
Thank you, Mr. Drayson. Mr. Renardo?
I think that all you guys and the presentation does a good job of laying out the improved service we definitely would see in our city. And I also know that some people, if not complaining, and they're certainly chuckling, like, dang, man, we're still, or we're still doing it this way. So Rita can definitely bring us kind of to the modern age. I think it does so at a cost. And we did commit ourselves a couple of times, one time at council, general council, and twice at finance committee, to make sure that our spend, especially in the next six months, is on stuff that really has a value prop. And so I'm not saying this doesn't, this actually has the potential to bring in more revenue. So we could be better off. But when I said I want to make it a math problem, it's because I think that there's a time and place to make, like, improvements to the service to our citizens, for sure. But, you know, if this isn't a must-must-have, then I think that we should focus on the math of it. That if they're able to demonstrate that they bring in a million dollars, but they cost incremental, they cost $600,000 more dollars than we're spending today, that's still $400,000 more dollars. And you get a better service, easy math. But if it doesn't have kind of a big demonstrable improvement to our revenue, then I just wonder, I'm gonna ask myself, is this the right year to improve our service offering? That's what I was saying.
Just a little background. I started talking to Angela in February. I had a date scheduled for March, and we all know what happened in March, so we had to cancel. And I wanted to get this to you, in front of you, sooner rather than later. And in discussions I've had with Angela, this is probably a six-month implementation process, I think she had told me earlier. So there is a timeframe there for the implementation process. Mr. Drayson?
So you've been working with Angela, Rita, and you've been, I'm sure you've been working with the state auditors based on this spreadsheet here. How does Rita fit in with the state auditor report versus us staying with our own tax department? Are we get, is our own tax department going to be able to accomplish the goals that the state is looking for within this spreadsheet?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Drayson. I do know that April and Anna Mary are very aware that we're talking to Rita. As a matter of fact, I think I even emailed them a couple of things back online. And we have a meeting next Wednesday, June 17, and we can certainly ask those types of questions. One of the things I wanted to report on, and outline, was that we, you know, had an introductory viewing of what Rita, some of the services they can answer, but we certainly have a lot more questions to ask. Mr. Renardo?
Yeah, I just want, and I can email you afterwards if it's easier. But when she sends the response, whether it be tonight or tomorrow, it'd be good to ask her to include the following. Be very clear about the rate for year one, but if she can give out year rates as well. Like, commit her, try to nail her down to, but what's year two look like? Because that was a little funny to me, although I was sitting all the way over here. And the second question I had is, when are we actually going to be billed for services? So if it takes six months, and we start in August, and that takes us through the start of the next tax year, and they perform services generating six, a million extra dollars, are we billed kind of throughout the year, or are we billed at the end? I just, that would be a good thing to understand too, because potentially, we could be in a situation where we're not paying them until we've gotten this magic million dollars. So again, now we get a better service offering for the city, and we haven't really even screwed up the budget. So those are two questions. If you didn't write this out, I can email you.
Yeah, please do. Yeah, I don't think we talked about, gotten as far as to talk about what their billing cycle was.
Yeah, but you see what, you see what I'm trying to get at? It could be delayed enough that it probably would be okay with me, so.
Yeah, and if there's any other questions, we can send them to me, send them straight to Angela, and of course, get those answers back to you as quickly as possible. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you for your patience there. Thank you, Mr. Renardo, for your computer technology skills. We're finished with a Rita discussion. Item two that we had on here was parade discussion. I think it's probably been a few meetings ago. I think we, maybe we had a few back and forth about the, about the parade, and that the Chamber of Commerce had canceled. I think there were, there were a few people that were asking if we could do one later. So I just put it on here for a discussion, if anyone wants to, has any suggestions, ideas, comments. Mr. Ray?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So through discussions, we've determined that the parade is run by the Chamber of Commerce, correct? And Coney Island has already been canceled for the year, correct? So basically, the discussion tonight is, how bad do we want the parade? And if it's canceled, is that gonna be a big deal? Is that kind of where we're at with the discussion? Where, can we like it? We're talking about the parade. Are we talking about we're gonna have it, or are we gonna have it canceled? Or does it really matter to us, or is that the discussion?
The city doesn't really have the capacity to put on the parade.
Right.
In the way that it is put on, and has been put on for 100 years. We don't have the ability to do that. So that's, it's not a question of, are we still going to have the parade? Because the structure's not there, there's not a parade group, there's not, what we, the only real discussion I think on a parade right now is, does city council see some way, shape, or form that we could have a parade in some different manner that is not as labor-intensive, doesn't have, you know, 45 sponsors, and does not require the insurance and all that? Is there a way to have something that is good for community spirit and morale? And I think that's what we're looking at here, is maybe ideas, if somebody has an idea. We've seen in profit, we've seen parades for people's birthdays, or, you know, for graduation parades, or different things like that. Is there, are there any ideas that council members have to say, well, I'm willing to work on doing this or that? So I don't know. I mean, Mr. Kelso has maybe some questions. Mr. Kelso?
So with the schools, we did a couple parades, at least at Shoresburg, where we drove by on like a route that was planned out, and the NOR police helped kind of block off some of the streets so it was safe. And it was pretty enjoyable, I thought it was pretty cool. There's a lot of families outside waving and all that. I think it was a very good thing, given how we ended school so early. And I think that is something that can be done. Is it the parade we would want? No. But I think it's a really neat option to look at. Who would plan it? I'm not sure. It would have to, it wouldn't be just one little kind of school district area, it'd be more of the whole city. So it'd probably be a longer trip, you know, than just that little area. But I think that's something that could be done well and neat, and we can get some of the city vehicles out, we can all get in our vehicles, and some of the police and fire guys, and, you know, stuff like that. I think that's something that could definitely be a starting point. It would be a much bigger scale thing than what the schools were able to do. But I think that's definitely probably what an idea like this would look like on that kind of scale.
Anyone else? Mr. Drayson?
I was a big proponent of having the parade, and I was disappointed that it was canceled. I did have some discussion with the mayor about wanting to try and figure out a way to do the parade. However, after a couple, I guess, couple weeks of thinking about it and realizing, well, if we do a parade like a birthday parade, like they've been doing, you're kind of trying to hit a lot of streets in a short amount of time. You're trying to hit the entire city, you're not bringing the entire city to one point. So in order to try and hit at least 66, 70% of the city, that's kind of a monumental task, I think. As much as I would love to have that parade, I, I'm not sure that we can hit a ton of the streets that we want to hit, because we'd have to be going into the back streets just to hit some of these streets. I mean, I guess we could ask people to come out to Carthage Avenue, Montgomery Road, some of the bigger streets, but I don't know that we can pull something like that off, to be honest.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thompson?
Just for everybody's information too, I checked the Ohio COVID site today, and the list of things that are not allowed yet. Parades, fairs, and festivals are on the not allowed list. So whereas, I think small things like driving around and stuff, that help people separated. But like you said, if you were gonna do anything that got into a large number of people, you'd have to pull them to certain centralized locations, which I think goes against the spirit of what the state government is recommending. So I agree, I think it's, it becomes problematic, because we just start gathering, potentially gathering groups of people that are too large at this time.
Thank you, sir. Absolutely, very much, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I definitely agree with the mayor that it would be too, too much for the city to try to do what the Chamber of Commerce does. And I was actually at a conversation with the mayor about it earlier. And I just, I don't think it's realized by citizens and elected officials that walk in the parade, you know, many years, how much volunteer effort it takes to really put that thing on, and just how many resources from the city it takes. I mean, I'm not gonna say every officer is on, because of course you got night shifts. But I mean, there's a ton of police officers on to manage that parade. So it's, it's a lot, a lot of work. But I do like the, I mean, I personally kind of like the idea of the drive-around parade, like the school district did for kind of graduation. It was the one where they went around the entire city, and they didn't hit every street, but they, you were almost, pretty much always within, everybody was within probably three or four blocks at the most of a place where they were going. And I heard there was a lot of good feedback on that. I mean, there were people that complained about it of, for various reasons. But, you know, if we're going to do anything, I think organizing that would be the best thing, you know, if somebody were to do it. But, you know, I also think it's probably gonna be okay if we don't have a parade this year. I mean, it's unfortunate, and it, you know, we all love the parade, 127, or six, or five years at this point. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty wonderful thing, but there's been a lot of things that have been sacrificed this year. And there's a lot of things that have been sacrificed this year that we're gonna come back next year, and the parade is one of them. So, you know, I don't, don't think that we should spend that much time on it. But if somebody out there were to organize some kind of a parade, a driving parade, I'd participate in it. I'd go wave and throw out candy. I know you're not supposed to throw out candy normally, but I think that we could probably throw out candy in a driving parade. So whatever it is, I'd participate in a driving one, but that's, that's it. I just think that's better not to do anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Bonson. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate that. You're, you know, that's, that's, that's pretty good comments, Mr. Bonson. Just to do my history, before I, before I say what I really want to say, for, for over 35 years now, I've been a part of that parade. Every year for 35 years or better, I've been some sort of, I've been involved, I've been in that parade. And so this parade is dear to my heart, and others, and a lot of people in Norwood love that parade. So, and in saying that... So, and in saying that, I do think that you are absolutely correct in saying that it really would be the end of the world if we didn't have a parade this year. And that is coming from somebody who has been a part of that for 35 years, and I hold that very dear. So, you know, given, given, given the situation where Mr. Thompson alluded, that, you know, the state government is still not allowing that, that type of gathering, I think that it would not be a terrible thing if we just didn't, we didn't have it. And, and trying to do a smaller parade, I, I understand the gesture, and I can, it would be nice, but I just don't, I don't see that, you know, that's, you know, if we're going to have a parade, we need to have one, and if you're going to downsize it, I just, I just, I don't know, it just seems a little cheesy to me. But hey, if somebody wants to do it, I'm definitely, I'm definitely going to support anyone's efforts in doing so. But it's not the end of the world if we don't have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy.
And I do appreciate Mr. Thompson bringing up the governor's limitations for the parade. I don't know that those limitations will still be in July, but I still hold the fact that even if it's just us as council putting on a parade and walking down the street, it's going to be a monumental task for us to try and hit as many streets as we can in a, in an hour, being a three-square-mile city. I, as much as I would like the parade, walked in it with my grandmother, walked in it with my mother, walked in it myself last year. And it does pain me, just like it does John, to not see this as a tradition again this year. But, you know, look forward to next year, and hopefully next year it's bigger and better, and we get a ton more people than we typically do. Just trying to give it a break this year, I guess. You know, maybe, maybe another idea is that we put a survey out on the Norwood city page and get the opinion of the, the public, and see if they want to have something done. I don't, just a, an idea to throw out there.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy.
What if they say yes? Does that mean that Matt Dracy is going to coordinate a parade?
I'm not coordinating a parade, I'll tell you that right now, but...
That's the problem with the survey. Yes, okay.
The only other thing I like saying is, and I'm, and this will be the last comment that I got on the parade, you know, so we don't beat a dead horse here, is, you know, COVID, this, this thing that happened, it's, it's a terrible thing, I realize it, but we have slowed down a little bit, so it's not terrible. We have slowed down, and it's okay to, to just stand back and, and, you know, relax. So it's, it's not all about, you know, let's just, life is calmed down, slowed down for everybody, and it's a good thing. Some, it's a good thing for some.
Anyone else? Do we move on? Okay. Item three on our discussion, this evening, this regarding the property at 4226 Montgomery Road, specifically the property behind, property of, Mr. Dracy had, had asked me to put that on there, and I think we had, we had discussed that, I spoke to Mr. Moore, and he had asked for some feedback from Mr. Moore, which he hasn't provided yet. And was there anything else additional to that?
So essentially, what I'm, what I'm looking for with this is that, you know, when, when I got an update from the mayor, I guess, what, maybe two meetings, three meetings ago, or whenever it was, that sort of was refusing to sell that property, but they would lease it to us. However, they never gave us any terms, how much. I mean, we have no idea what, what we could do, can't do there, if we do lease it at this point, until they come out with terms if we decide to go that direction. So I did have someone else approach me on an idea that I had, however, I, I was kind of leery to bring it up. But when this person did approach me about it, it kind of spurred my effort a little bit, and piqued my interest to see what the rest of council felt about it. What I want to look into doing is possibly conducting an eminent domain on that property. There's no houses on that property, it's all grassy area with one tree stump in the very corner of it. This, looking at this property, would spur economic development within that area by allowing those businesses to actually be rentable, and smaller businesses to, to lease that, those, those front, the frontage of those buildings there, and possibly grow into a bigger business and move somewhere other than where they're at. You know, it, it could be a good startup for a small business within that area. The problem that I'm running against, and I've had three or four people who were interested in leasing that property, or leasing at least one of those storefronts, is that they don't have any parking available for them to lease that storefront. So when they have customers that want to come in, there's no parking available around or close to that, to those three or four storefronts that are there, and they chose to move on to a, a different city at that point and find something else. So if we're, if I knew of at least four people that moved on to another city and got a storefront that had a parking lot, I can't imagine how many, how many others have inquired about that, or saw that for lease on a real estate website, came and drove past and went, oh, I'm not even going to look at that, and then moved on. I think if we can do an eminent domain on that property and take it for fair market value, put in a parking lot, we could spur economic development within those three to four storefronts, even if it's just a coffee shop, a donut shop, something smaller that, that could help somebody build their business. And I kind of wanted to find out if anybody else here, I, I know that, that word, I've been saying it is not a good word around this city, but we're not, we're not looking to take anybody's houses, we're not looking to take any businesses, we're looking to take a vacant piece of grass that won't, won't be used for any purpose. Sorta can, can try to make the argument that they want to put a transit center there. I honestly don't think it's big enough for a transit center there. But if they're not going to, if they're not willing to work with us, I, I want to see if, if we've got enough support around to at least start the conversation. So I had asked Mr. Moore two meetings ago if he would research whether or not we could actually do an eminent domain on a public transit piece of property. I just got word today from President of Council that Mr. Moore hasn't even looked into it. So I would like to ask the President of Council if he would ask the Clerk of Council to send a letter to the Law Department requesting information on whether or not we can conduct eminent domain on that property by the next council meeting.
I don't know the answer to this. Does it cost money to do that?
So it does, but it's fair market value, and if you look at it, it's just land, so you're probably looking, I went out and I, I did the calculations from experience, and I calculated around $6,000 to $9,000 for fair market value on that land. So it would cost us fair market value, that's about it.
And you don't know what they, have you gone back to sort of ask kind of what it would lease, what they would lease it?
I have not. I, I've been trying to get some information from the Safety Service Director, but that's all he's been able to give me. So my guess is that they're pretty much done talking, if he can't get a hold of them now.
Mr. Kelch?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is something that, Mr. Dracy, he's, he's talked to me about this a couple times, and this is all my support. In my 32 years here in Norwood, I've seen quite a few businesses there come and go, and Montgomery is a busy road, so parking right there in front of these places is not ideal for many places. And when you only have one or two spots in front of there, it really makes it hard to get customers in, and they're going to go somewhere else down the road that's maybe a little bit easier to access, or safer to access, especially if you have kids with you. Having a parking lot behind there, I do think, will help some of these businesses out, even if it's not as big of a moneymaker as some other problems, it's still a problem that's these small business owners are having. And I think it's within our purview and our duties as council to try to help them with that. So ideally, it wouldn't be eminent domain, because that's kind of, you know, last resort, but I think if it comes there, I would support that, to help these businesses that want to come there and be able to have a safe place for their customer base to come there, to make it fruitful for them to have a business here in Norwood. That is definitely something that I'll be supporting, and I would, I would be appreciative if, you know, the powers that be, whether it's the Law Department, does research this. If Mr. Murphy's running the negotiation roadblocks, let us know, and we can make our next steps. But yeah, definitely, this is something I think is worth venturing into for these businesses that stand to occupy or already occupy these, these storefronts.
And I think that this kind of ties into this, what was it, $20,000 or $30,000 grant that Norwood Together got to improve the development of that end of Montgomery Road? I think that that would help with that study, or with that, with the planning that they've got, that they're trying to conduct. And another thing is, is that when these businesses close for the evening, the public can utilize that for public parking to occupy, or to, to go to other businesses that are still open. They can, they can park there, which is close to the center of the city, bike north, bike south, east and west, throw their bikes back on the cars and go, you know, back to their house, or, you know, take a walk from that point, north, south, east or west. I think it has, not just the, the, the concept isn't just to help the businesses out and help our, our economy grow by getting employees in there working, but it also helps the city out to provide a public parking space for the city during times that, that need to be.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will just, for one, say that I just can't imagine I would ever be in support of utilizing eminent domain to try to capture this property. You know, the city's used to it in the past, and, you know, there's various opinions on that, but in particular, I mean, SORTA is a public agency that is, that has its own mission, and, you know, I think we've got to do, I think we can do more to try to find out exactly why they want to use that property, but I mean, in the end, it's their property, it's not our property. And I understand the, the desire to want to control that property, but would we be saying the same thing if just that property was owned by, you know, a private owner that just decided they didn't want to sell it? Would we be thinking that we might go eminent domain that property, take that from them? I mean, I don't think we'd be having that conversation if it was a private owner. And so I just want to say that, yeah, this one, I, I don't even know how, hopefully the Law Department doesn't spend much time on this, because I think this is a pretty, I think the eminent domain part is, is pretty far-fetched, in my opinion, to try to use that. I will say, though, I mean, I do feel for the business owners, and I did reach out to the CEO and general manager of SORTA today. I've not heard back yet, but I'll keep on it. I would like to find out exactly, you know, why they want to keep the property, and, you know, if I hear back, I'll make sure that the rest of the council knows, but I think communication and working with them is probably going to be the, you know, lead to the best outcomes in general, and not, you know, antagonize and take something from another public agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Raiden?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So a couple things come to mind. First thing is, you know, we're losing our green space, we're paving over everything that we own, and I think that's a, a valid point that we, you know, our green space is important to us, and it's forever leaving, and the more you pave, the less we have. So that's the first point that I have. Secondly, the only, the only thing that comes to mind, and I, I do share a lot of your points, Mr. Thompson, I share a lot of those. My question is, what if you owned that property, and we wanted to take it from you? Or any one of us? I think you might have a different, a different outlook. I understand, I totally understand where you're coming from there, and I think you may have a different perspective than the rest of us, because there's some history there, I think. I think, I could be wrong. So, but that's, that's my point. If you owned it, you'd probably feel differently. If you tried the eminent domain me, you'd be really, you'd be ready for a fight. So I think that's a, that's a, that's a valid point.
And I understand your point. However, if I owned that property, I would absolutely look to sell it. Absolutely. Why? Because there's nothing that I, there's nothing...
I'm not disagreeing with that, Mr. Dracy, I'm disagreeing with that.
You, you asked me if I owned that property.
Yes, sir.
Would I sell it, or would I take it, or would I force an eminent domain? If I owned that property, I would absolutely sell it, because one, am I doing anything with that property? That's where you got to ask it. If I'm building a house...
I kind of figured you'd say that, but my point is, if you ask me the same question, I'm telling you, not nobody.
But see, the reason I brought this up is, you know, in the past, yes, Norwood has a history with eminent domain. However, that was us taking property from individual homeowners that, in my opinion, by force. This is not taking property from an individual owner. This is taking property from somebody that is not utilizing that property and wasting tax dollars as it is.
I'm fully aware of that, thank you.
I mean, look at what their buses are doing to Montgomery Road right now. They're tearing Montgomery Road up, and we're getting nothing out of it.
I, I, it's not my, it's not, I don't, I don't wish to, you know, I understand your compassion, I understand you're passionate about this, and I respect that.
Here's my argument, okay? You, you got on me about Cappy's, and stifling a business owner. Essentially, that is what you're doing by not even considering this proposal, because you're, you're stifling business owners from being able to lease that property. So the same argument that you made to me on Cappy's would be the same argument I'm going to make to you.
You're absolutely wrong, and I'll tell you why. Cappy's is a business, he's there, and he wanted to work. He wanted to do business, and he needed us to help him, so he moved forward. You're acting like this is going to help a future business that's not even there yet.
It absolutely will help the economic development of the city.
I get it, I understand your passion. I, I just, I just, I said what I had to say. I understand. I appreciate you, too.
I think, Mr. Thompson, I think...
You go for it, Mr. Kelch.
So I just want to respond to a few points. It was said that this is taking property from an individual landowner that's being underutilized. I mean, there's properties around the city that are being underutilized, and that are owned by individual entities or people, and I, I just don't see us going and trying to take those properties from those people, you know, because we think that we can use it better. The other thing about buses tearing up Montgomery Road, the city is responsible for paving the streets, and the city knows exactly where those buses go, because they haven't, the bus routes haven't changed. So when the city repaved Montgomery Road, the city should have put concrete paths down where the bus stops were. That's not the city, that's not on SORTA. And the city chose not to do that at the time for whatever reason they did, and it's likely going to be financial. But I don't, you know, continually blaming SORTA for that, when the buses have been there for years and decades, and there were streetcars before that, I, I don't think that's fair. And then the other part of it is that, you know, SORTA just, we have the sales tax that was just approved, and 30% of it's going to be for road projects. So I can definitely foresee some potential projects on Montgomery Road that would help speed up traffic and help speed up the buses, whether it be, you know, the traffic light Norwood Avenue and Montgomery Road, whether it could be other improvements that would keep traffic moving, less stopping. And I think that we should be working to partner with SORTA more, and like I said, I think trying to file an eminent domain action on them, I think we, I think we're going to be laughing stock for that. And then the other thing about the business, that property hasn't been owned, so the people that own the building, as much as I do feel for them for owning the building and not having parking, trust me, I, I have talked to this person, and I know how frustrating it is. That person bought the building knowing that there was no parking, so I don't know if it's our job necessarily to, you know, bail out that, you know, I guess, not bail out, but to, to go after that. And that's, again, it's not on the business owner, I'm not trying to go after the business whatsoever, but sure, could those buildings be used a little bit more if there was parking? Could there be a little bit more tax revenue? Yeah, but we're going to spend, I don't know how many, about, is it $50,000 we'd spend buying that, between the legal fees and the thing? There would be a lot of money the city would spend on that. There would be a lot of money the city would spend on that. And, you know, again, I just don't know how fruitful that's going to be. I really think that we should work, keep working with SORDA, and then try to get SORDA the property owner, the adjacent property owner together, and really just try to let them work it out. Because in my opinion, yeah, eminent domain is just a nonstarter.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. DeNardo?
Yeah. It's actually a little bit of echoing, but there's some add-on. I do think we can take a lot of the tone down a little bit and pursue more of the original route you're going on, which is try to talk to them and see if there's a leasing arrangement. More because I want to understand it. I'm not a lawyer, so I understand why you're talking to Keith and the Law Department. But I imagine that this is, and you kind of even heard in your tone, that is a long shot, and it could be an expensive long shot. So a more likely outcome probably would be going down and working with SORDA. So I'm just, if there is a road I would want to go down, and I don't think I do, but if there is a road I want to go down, it'd probably be working with them because I think eminent domain would start a bad precedent that we've already not been great at.
Then how long do we work with them? What happens when they start putting up roadblocks like they already have? What happens when they start giving vague information because they really don't want to do anything with that property or don't want to lease that property?
I just, I was just saying, I think it's going to be expensive, and not that that isn't worthwhile. If it's going to help economic development, there could be a cost benefit there. But we should understand what that eminent domain process is. That's why I asked, kind of like, how much does this cost? I don't know the answer, but I bet we'd have ballparks. And so when we talk, it sounds like you're talking to Keith. You already passed her a letter. When we talk to them, it'd be good to get back from the Law Department. From your experience, what does this stuff look like in total? Not the cost of the property, but how much time goes into this? Are there legal fees like someone brought up? I'd just like to know the full package that might happen here before we start investing a lot of time going down a road. If it's $9,000, oh crap, maybe that is a good deal, even if we couldn't do it, which I don't know. If it's 50, dude, I don't know. We've got a lot of things going on in our budget right now.
Thank you, Mr. DeNardo. Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think that eminent domain does scare people, and it is harsh. It's obviously a last resort kind of thing. But it most certainly is within our purview and our job to discuss. And if we choose to use that option, we choose to use that option. I agree with talking to them more, trying to find out some figures on leasing, trying to find out, you know, why they don't want to sell. Do they have something they're planning to do there or whatever? But I think most certainly it is our job to discuss the eminent domain factor of it, as bad as it is. And I don't think anybody in here takes it lightly or wants to just go rip the property like we own everything. But I definitely do think it sits in a different bracket than some of the other pieces of property around the city that aren't, you know, being used properly or whatever. This sits behind some businesses, and it could instantly make those businesses more profitable. It could make that building better. Saying he bought it knowing there wasn't a parking lot, yeah, but that doesn't mean you can't improve things or hope for improvement in the future. Maybe he's buying a cheap piece of real estate hoping in the future something happens. You know, that's what we do every day when we buy properties or, you know, we buy cars and houses, and we hope to get more of a return on investment. So I think that to bring that in is kind of, you know, it just doesn't factor in for me as much. As far as it being a green space, it's a forgotten space more like. I mean, you pass by it when you're driving behind there. Other than that, there's not much that can go there safely, in my opinion, for a green space. It's not something we can do anything with other than have as a patch of grass unless SORDA decides that they want to put something there. And again, I think, I don't think Matt's talking about coming in and just laying the hammer down on them. I really think it's something that, you know, is frustration there, but it's not something I don't think anybody's taking lightly or, you know, thinking, well, screw it, we tried. No, maybe they want a little bit of money out of it. Maybe they want to hold on to it in case they can put a transit center there or something. I'm not sure. But asking those questions, doing the research, talking, having this discussion, you know, is very important, and it is a part of our job, all right? You know, conversation creates debate. Debate creates results. And whatever result that is that comes from this, hopefully, it's beneficial to us as a city, this property owner, the businesses there, so that they can expand or they can have a couple parking spots dedicated or if they're metered spots where the city can make some revenue. What that is, I'm not sure. But I think it definitely is within our job to look at at least and kind of try to find some sort of solution in goal that does kind of benefit everybody.
And I did approach Mr. Murphy back in February with this. So he's been working on this since February. And for me to get an update two or three, maybe three meetings ago, I guess it was now, which is what, four months after we, three months after we started the conversations only to get, well, we don't want to sell it, but we might lease it. That might, and then all of a sudden him getting shut down and blocked out with roadblocks ever since kind of tells me that they're basically saying, well, we're not going to do anything with it, and we're not, definitely not going to let you guys do anything with it.
Anyone else? Mr. Gaver, sir?
Just to be clear, just for the people at home, the piece of property, even though we gave the address of 4226 Montgomery Road, this is the old Triangle Building. I think the last, really the last business that was in that triangle was Boggs before he retired. So this is where Lafayette comes into Montgomery Road and Cameron Avenue. And there's a strip that goes down through there, which is where the rail line used to be. So the railroad went down Lafayette. So SORDA bought all that back when there was the big hype of light rail, and they were wanting to get all those kind of things. If you go south there, that's all been sold to other locations. Ted's Pawn Shop is over there where the rail line would have went through. There's a distributor that's across the street from them if you go that way. If you go the opposite way, if you go north on Lafayette, and once you crawl, and this particular piece is between Ashland and Cameron there on Lafayette, it's a green space area right now. Heading north, they did sell that lot to Ashland Avenue Baptist Church, and they paved it and they use it now. They kept some green space. There's trees that go along through there, so we still get some green space going, which is a good idea. I'm all for that as well. And then you go into Surrey Square where, again, they have it, they used a strip of it for green space, planting trees along that way. I think that we need to really push the negotiations thing. I'm not saying, and when Mr. Dracy first started and he alluded to somebody talking to him about it, it was me. You know, I'll fess up. I'm not hiding anything. That is an option that we have. Now, is ED a bad word in Norwood? Yeah. But it was because it was used for the wrong reason, and it was used wrongly, and we suffered from that because the court said that we were wrong in how we used it, but it all got settled. But it is an option. I mean, it should be our very, very last resort. And I think that there's still a lot of talks and a lot of negotiations. Maybe we can do a land swap. Maybe they've got something else somewhere else. There's no way that they could build anything there. There's not enough room for them to build stuff and still have the space that they need from the street and from the building behind them. So there's no way that they could build something there. They would have to buy all that property to be able to build anything there. So, you know, it's one of those, sell it to us so we can use it, or you buy all of it and level it all and make green space if that's what you want, and we'll have another pocket park. So I'm not for eminent domain, let's go do that. Because that's going to be very costly, and we would have to look at the cost of that, and that's why our Law Department needs to be involved in that. So there is a lot of negotiation that we need to do, whether we can buy it, whether, you know, I'm not sure that we want to lease it. Because even if we lease it, then we're going to have to pave it and then pass on that leasing to the owner for them to use that parking, which would, you know, is still going to be costly in that respect. You know, a land trade or something like that, or just, you know, donate it to the city would be a great option, you know? But we do need to look at all areas, all negotiations, all avenues, like anything else. That's, you know, that's got to be our very last resort. But it is an option. But I just want to be clear of where we're actually talking and a little bit about that piece of property.
And I did offer that donation part up to Mr. Murphy, and he did tell me that they took that off the table real quick, which was kind of disheartening to me. You know, I just, I hate to see somebody like SORDA not work with us at all.
Can I make another statement?
Yes, sir.
I would disagree, unfortunately. I would have to disagree with Mr. Bonzel on that 30% of that new levy that they just passed, which I wish they hadn't. I dare say we see a penny of that in Norwood. That they're going to, their plans for that is for the Western Hills, Bayou, and all the things in Cincinnati. We won't see a dime of that.
Here, here.
That's just my opinion, and, you know, we can hopefully prove me wrong. I would love to see them help out with our areas, our bus line areas, but we're not going to see any of that.
Anybody else?
Ladies and gentlemen? Very briefly, I'll make this very brief. Just the report on accounting methods. I'm going to give a report on the next meeting on June 23. I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Maloney. I met with him this morning. Thank him for his department fulfilling out that Rita Estment worksheet. And also, he's working with April and Anna Mary as well to complete the requirements via the Treasurer's Department. And then Mr. Stitt and his department are also working very diligently as well with April and Anna Mary. Mr. Stitt had given me these copies, and I had sent them to the State Alder's Office. So we're trying to just chip away at this thing. And I emailed it to you. I also gave you a hard copy tonight. And I know that Mr. DeNardo and his team are working with the Finance Committee for, I think there's three items currently. So I just wanted to acknowledge those two groups. And I will have a more detailed report on those two groups. And I'll email this to you guys prior to that. So.
Thank you. Mr. Kelch?
Thank you. There's two rec items on here. Do we need to look, do we need to address those at our committee meeting? Are those going to be involved in the policies and procedures updates? They seem kind of like policy, like depositing funds daily and that kind of thing. Is that something we need to look at in our committee? Or is that being addressed already?
I think it's being addressed already, but I will certainly give you a --
I was going to ask the mayor, but he had to leave.
To me, it looks like it's the rec department because it's under the department portion. And then there's another column that says committee slash department. And then you've got like Law Department, and then Finance, I would say Finance Committee.
Yeah, fair enough. Just didn't know if we needed to look at it.
Anything rec under that department option is just going to be like a rec department or a rec commission.
It sounds very procedural. I just wanted to make sure.
I would like to have this, at least who's doing what completed by the 23rd for everyone so we all know what's going on. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So there's a lot of things in here that are going to require, like, council approval when it comes to policies. I mean, one about number nine, council should create policies regarding how many times a meter can be read by the resident if the city is required to read the meter. How many times a meter, a reading can be estimated, limits on payment plans, define parameters for when service should be shut off, and when adjustments can be done, and who should approve the adjustment. So like that one, for example, of course, it's not council writing that because, I mean, it's really the city administration policy, council approving it. I just want to make sure that when you do, like, look at this, like, I mean, I know that council's named on here as a thing, but it'd be good to know which one of these council things council needs to actually create and which ones we're just going to be approving, you know, reviewing and approving.
According to April, there are 18 separate ones that council needs to approve.
Right. And are any of those 18 ones that we actually need to create as well? Or is it really just approving items that the city administration and/or the other of those three elected departments bring to it?
I don't know all of them specifically, but I certainly have a point.
Yeah, I just have, if there are things that like council needs to be, it sounds like there are a couple Finance Committee things, but I'd like to just know those so that we just don't let this come off our radar.
Right. And that's why I try to give this to you guys frequently so that we all kind of know where we're on the same page. And on the 23rd, working with April and Anna Mary, I'd like to have policies built in so we can know, and then know what we have to do as a --
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah. For ones that we're making, like, for example, I think this is a good example because it would demonstrate stuff that committees would have to do. So there were three Finance Committee. All we've done so far is, I took notes on what we're probably going to do on the next Finance Committee meeting. We're going to write them out, and I'll say, everyone happy? What, in what format do we bring them to council? It's not in ordinance. Do we just say this is something that we'd like to be put into our policies? And then we present that?
My understanding is that the State Alder's Office, April and Anna Mary specifically, want to see first what we've come up with.
So I would submit, in those three examples, I would draft what the committee kind of all said thumbs up on. And I would email that to Jim and Anna Mary first, and then they would bring that back to council in some format, and we would all approve it.
That's my understanding.
Probably, yes.
Cool. Anybody else?
The only other comment that I would, my observation here is this is an outstanding amount of work here that you are putting in here, I think others, too. And this has to be done before we exit our plan with the state. So I just want to commend you for this, and I appreciate the work that you got involved in it.
Thank you, Mr. Brayton. Anyone else? No further comments, then we're adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.